It's a little bit different.
He's no hair.
You're not allowed to have one.
Same as you.
Oh, no.
That's a pretty bad guy, isn't it?
It's a little bit different. It's slightly different from the one from the other. He's going to go with this one.
That's a stepping stone. Which one's he?
It was a gold ever. Oh, Tracy, we got one. Wow, there's.
Well, I enjoy it so far. I know last one was bad.
It's a little bit more.
I'm signing that out.
I was kind of in the bar was kind of quiet. Can't figure out exactly what it was. I went flat.
They'll kind of talk about stuff.
Okay, we'll bring the city council in a quarter. Seven minutes or whatever. This is for September tenth of twenty nineteen. We're going to do something a little bit different tomorrow as nine eleven. What I would like is for each of you to stand for a moment. Think of where you were and think about all of those people that perished. And also the first responders, police departments, fire departments and all that. Then we'll say the pledge of allegiance. Okay, we'll do the pledge.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're here, we have Patrick, the city attorney, Joe, our dreamer, city engineer. Yeah, I'm sorry. I got a bad girl. And the county mayor here, first time, so please give. Bear with us. So what we'll do is we're going to have citizens' comments and it looks like there's a whole bunch here. So I'm going to ask this here. Hold it to two minutes, please. Otherwise, we're going to call you out of order. So if you want to get started, whoever it is, can start out with whatever they got.
Are we giving a meeting here for the public hearing?
Yeah, they're right here. Yeah.
Oh, okay. So there are no citizens' comments then?
So I'm new to Canyon. I've only been here.
You want to come up to the podium there and give your name, please?
I'm Sean Hayden. I'm new to town. I've only been here probably about just a little over six months. My one pretty long Red Wing Avenue. And so I guess I didn't, I didn't really understand how this process worked. I'm from a very small town of Potomac and didn't have anything like this. So I guess the procedure of how this worked when was this really was brought to our attention and asked if, you know, if this is what we all wanted to do on this street before the number was sent to us. Because we haven't received any information. And as I said, this just came up and I don't care why I should probably be a part of this. But we haven't had any information on this until the work was done and then we're receiving about ten thousand dollars per person.
So it sounds like that's a question related to the proposed project on Red Wing Avenue. So we'll address that in the course of the public hearing. I'll go in the introductory remarks, I'll kind of give the background and the context. And then we've got about a half an hour long presentation that will explain where all the information was from.
Thank you.
Okay. Go for adopt the agenda. Is there any change being made?
The only thing is Commissioner Barney Nesseth wants to address the council, which I thought could be under probably presentations either before Tracy or after. So that would be the only addition that I would have.
Got a real wide of minutes.
We have basically the consent agenda.
I will we adopt the agenda with that change and approve the consent agenda. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I would move right along then. Presentation of public hearings. Recognition, recommendations, Red Wing Avenue, public hearing. Do all agree? Oh, okay.
Yep, I can take the introduction. So good evening, everyone. Welcome. You're here tonight for the public improvement hearing for Red Wing Avenue. And the little background of how this came to be, state law, chapter four twenty-nine of the state statutes, allows the city council to evaluate its infrastructure. You know, the city owns and operates the water distribution system, the sanitary sewer collection system, the stormwater collection system and the public roads and sidewalks. And the state statute allows the council to evaluate their systems and gives them different ways that they can rehabilitate and improve those systems. Under chapter four twenty-nine, if the council or if a need is identified to improve those utility systems or the street systems, a project can be initiated. And a project can be initiated either if the public feels there is a need, they can petition for a project. Or if the city council feels there's a need, the city council can initiate it themselves without having a petition from the public. So the city council has been watching, has been evaluating this infrastructure for some time. They've identified Red Wing Avenue as being a street that is getting in more and more deteriorated condition. The utility systems on it have been investigated and they're in deteriorated condition as well. So they identified it as a candidate for a potential project. And the proposed project would reconstruct the utilities and reconstruct the roadway and bring them all back up to a new condition. Now, there's a very specific process that has to be followed under the state statute. And the first thing that's done is the city council, if they want to initiate their project, they order or they direct the city engineer to perform a study of their roadway. And I should introduce myself. I'm the city engineer. My name is Joel Ryan. I work for the firm of Bolton and Menk. We are a private engineering firm who contracts with the city to serve as the city engineer. And with me tonight is Derek Oldinger. He is a project manager that works with me on my team. And he's been doing the detailed investigation on Red Wing Avenue. So as I mentioned, the first step is for the city council to order what's called a feasibility report. And in that report, we essentially study if the project's feasible. We look at what the existing conditions are, what improvements would need to be made, what they would cost, what we estimate them to cost, how they could be financed. And then we report back to the council whether or not it's feasible. At that point then, the next official step in the chapter four twenty-nine process is for the council to receive that report and acknowledge it's been completed and then call for a public hearing. And that's where we officially have to notify everyone that's affected by the project by a direct mailing, which you all should have gotten in the mail. We're also required to advertise in the official public newspaper at least fifteen days ahead of the meeting. And then we hold this public improvement hearing. And at this meeting, we're required by law to present the findings of the feasibility report to you along with information on the costs and information on the financing. And one of the tools under state statute is special assessments, where if the city can show that property will benefit from the improvements being made, then the city can assign a cost up to the amount of that benefit that the property receives. And that's called a special assessment. And if we propose to use those, they have to be identified in the feasibility report and we have to report on them to you tonight. And so that is what Derek is going to be going through. We've got a presentation here that will take about a half an hour. We do have the feasibility report. I think Mark's got a copy right here. It's a bond document available for review by anybody at any time in the, in the public, in the city or outside of the city. Every property affected by the project is listed in the appendix to this report. And every cost is listed right down to the penny of what we estimate them to be, including what the assessments could be for the properties. Now, just so you know, this is not a done deal at this point. That's the public process allows for many checks and balances along the way. That's why you might not have heard about it until tonight because really it's just been very preliminary up till this point. The feasibility report is sometimes also called a preliminary engineering report because it's the first look, the first detailed look we've taken at the proposed improvements. That's why we report the information tonight to engage the public, allow you to ask every question that's on your mind tonight. We were obligated to hold the public hearing open as long as you have questions and, and want more information from us. At the end of the public hearing, the council will officially close the hearing and then they'll take up the debate as to whether they want to take the next step or not. They could pull the plug on the project and say, no, we're not ready to move forward. And they just set the preliminary engineering report on the shelf and that's the end of it. Or if they want to continue, they would then pass a resolution to officially order the project. And what that means is then we just put together detailed construction plans that would be prepared to go out on the market to receive bids from contractors. Once we prepare those plans, they would come back to the council again and the council again would have the opportunity to either stop the project or continue on the next step to get the bids. Once the bids are received, they come back to the council again and the council again has the decision to either stop the project or award a contract. And then if they take that step to award a contract, then we would go to construction. And that would be if everything, if the council wants to continue each step of the way, we're anticipating construction would be next summer, in the summer of twenty twenty. So there are a lot of checks and balances along the way, a lot of opportunities for the council. If, if a red flag comes up that they feel the project's not worth pursuing any farther, they, they can terminate the project anytime up until we award a construction contract. Then we're committed to construct the project. So with that background, I guess I'll ask first if the councilman has any questions before we start with the presentation.
Any questions?
I just have a comment that the, what you're going to be charged for special assessments is an estimate. So it's not firm until the end of the project. We don't know what it actually costs us down to the penny. And along that process, you can object and say that I don't think I'm getting full value for what you're charging. In which case, there would be some sort of a hearing and you would let us know why you think that. And we, on the other hand, would have to let you know why we think you are indeed getting your value out of this. So this is not as yet a done deal. It is still, you know, you have lots of input. And I'll leave it there.
Yep. As the councilman Nelson referred to, there, there are provisions to the law to give the property owners rights. If we do proceed with the project and you are assigned an assessment, you have rights as a property owner. And we'll be going through those as we go through the presentation. So I guess the summary is, is the cost tonight are estimates. And nothing yet is set in stone. And that's why we're presenting the information for the council to consider if they want to continue on with the next steps in the project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Derek and we'll go through the, the presentation and then we'll open up for questions after that.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, so as Joe had kind of mentioned, what the basic content that I'm going to be going through here today is really what was included in that feasibility report or that preliminary engineering report that was prepared, you know, basically finalized about a month or so back. So with that, I want to get that next slide, Joe. Just a real rough overview outline of what we'll be talking about here today. We'll take a look at the overall project area, the limits of the project that they're looking at for control improvements. Take a look at the, I'll provide a summary of the existing conditions for what we're seeing going on out there right now utility and surface standpoint. Then from there, we'll jump into what types of actual improvements would be included with this project. So from there, we'll look at costs and funding. Take a look at the assessments, both in, in terms of how much those assessments were and how, how those actual assessment values were calculated. And we'll wrap up the discussion and our tentative schedule for moving forward. And then we can open it up fully to, to questions and comments that you'd like the council to hear. I'll, I'll try to keep these, I'll go through this presentation a couple of slides at a time and I'll stop. If you have a question about something, feel free to raise your hand and we can justify that. Otherwise, if you, if you do have just a general comment on the project that you'd like the, the council to hear after the fact, if you wouldn't mind keeping those towards the end. We can just sit here at that time for that question. So approximate project area here. So we're talking primarily about Red Wing Avenue between the areas of Tenth Street, which is on the south side of the project. And as you move north on this figure, you move north, or as you move to the right on this figure, you move north all the way up to the intersection with Second Street, like the downtown area. There are two alternate project areas that were added on to this project as well. So that would include about a half a block of Fourth Street directly west of Red Wing Avenue, as well as one block of alley, which is over on the right-hand side of the screen. It should be the alley directly south of, of, of Second Street. And like I said, that, that alley extends for one block west of Red Wing Avenue. So a summary of the existing conditions, I don't know if Joe mentioned here. So the other day, we held a, a public information meeting where we had some very in-depth, detailed discussion about a lot of things associated with this project. I'm not going to go in, in as much detail as we did last week, but I just kind of wanted to do a rough overview of what we were talking about. So surface conditions, general characteristics of the pavement across the pavement area or across the project area, I'm characterizing as fair to poor. Basically, what that means is when I'm looking at that pavement, it appears to be on the back half of its life. There's some portions that are in better conditions, other portions that are in very poor conditions. But as, you know, as we're looking at the project from an overall standpoint, fair to poor condition on that back half of the site. The curb that's on both sides of the road throughout most of the project area is also in poor condition. There's, just like the pavement, there's some areas that are better, some areas that are worse, but generally in poor condition across the project area. So sidewalks, we've got some ADA compliance issues. We've got the middle of ADA, it's American Disabilities Act. Past years ago, it basically governed, you know, the various slopes that can go into sidewalks to allow full accessibility for as many types of users as we can get on those sidewalks. So that's, that's federal law that cities are looking at, these types of improvements that we build to those standards. This existing sidewalk that is out within Red Wing Avenue right now is not ADA compliant. In several areas, most obviously, you'll notice that at several of the intersections where there's pedestrian ramps that go off into the streets, a lot of steep ramps. In some cases, there isn't an actual ramp at all. So any wheelchair users or secondhand users would have challenges with those, with those areas. In addition to those ramps, there's other segments of sidewalk that have heaves or other types of trip hazards. In a lot of cases, those heaves or trip hazards are caused by large overgrown boulevard trees that are located right next to that sidewalk. So that'll be, you know, in addition to the sidewalk, we'll be looking at those trees as well and potentially removing a good portion of some of those larger diameter trees. One quick thing, one other quick thing with that sidewalk that I'll note. There are areas of the project where I know that the sidewalk is in good condition. There may be some property owners out there that have replaced that sidewalk in five or 10 years. Right now, I do not know if we'll be able to save that sidewalk or not. So from, we'll, we'll get into the proposed conditions here in a minute. But there's going to be a number of grading impacts associated with putting in the new street as well as utility impacts associated with putting in the new service lines and utility needs, that type of thing. So we'll, we'll get into that in a little bit more detail in just a second here. So just the conditions from a utility standpoint, looking at storm sewer that exists in storm sewer within the project area. There are a couple of blocks of storm sewer located kind of along the north. North path is the project where there is an urban, an urban style storm sewer system that has a storm main piping running down the middle of the road and catch basins located within the curves to catch that storm sewer. Other than that, that, you know, couple block area, a large portion of the project does not have storm sewer. So basically what can go on with that is during the larger storm events, those inlets that are in place down in the lower parts of the project, those inlets can get overwhelmed with the amount of water that's coming to, coming to those inlets. On the far south end of the project down in the Ninth Street, basically south of Eighth Street, there's, there's some sections you've probably noticed that don't have curb and gutter and any of that storm water that's falling within the street flows off into the adjacent ditches. And then it goes through kind of a maze of culverts before it finds its way outside of the project area. That's another area we're looking to address. There's a number of issues associated with, what's basically referred to as rural drainage inside a city. Basically, wet ditches that are, that are difficult to maintain. And if there are any issues with those culverts, sometimes those can also be difficult just because there's kind of a maze of them, kind of snuck through that end of the project. So a quick summary of, of storm sewer. From the sanitary sewer standpoint, there's about one block of sanitary in the far north end of the project that is newer sewer that was replaced back in twenty thirteen. A portion, that, that one section of main line right there, we're not looking to do any type of improvement on. But the remainder of, of the sanitary sewer, which is basically everything to the south of Third Street, we are taking a serious look at. All that main line, south of Third Street, was found to be, it's clay pipe main and the manhole structures appear to be block structures. So what does this mean? Why is it bad? Realistically, when it comes down to it, I've got one picture of some elevizing. If you guys can see it right in the center of the screen. That clay sanitary main is susceptible to cracking and there's often openings in that pipe located at the joints. So there's joints for a new segment of pipe over three to five feet with that, that clay main. When those openings exist within that pipe, it allows groundwater to enter the sanitary sewer system. So this, this issue of having clay pipes and cracks in the pipe is an issue throughout town and the city's looking at improving that. So the reason why those openings and the allowance of groundwater into the sanitary sewer system is a problem is citywide and there's a lot of groundwater coming into the system. It adds up to a lot of water that gets, that's, that gets conveyed to the waste plant. And basically can lead to capacity issues at that plant. So all that to say, we're looking at sanitary sewer improvement type of thing with this project. From water main standpoint, there are a couple of blocks of newer water main that are in place. However, the majority of the water main that's out within the project is either cast iron pipe main or also smaller diameter pipe that we're looking to address. So one of the characteristics of cast iron pipe is typically installed before the nineteen seventies. In this case, it was installed way before the nineteen seventies. Issues with it is that over time, that pipe begins to corrode and becomes very brittle. So the fear, the, the issue with it is when it becomes brittle, it's more susceptible to breaks. So as a general rule, we're looking at a project considering for, for reconstruction in cities. This would be a good opportunity to replace that pipe with more modern materials such as PVC or, or ductile iron pipe. So that's kind of a summary of the existing conditions. Is there any questions so far? Anyone else? So we'll hop into proposed conditions. What are we planning on doing with this project? So like we talked about the curb and gutter, pavement conditions are in poor condition before. So first and foremost, what we'll be doing, pulling off that pavement and replacing it with, with new bituminous pavement, a new gravel section below that bituminous as well as curb and gutter on both sides of the road. There's going to be some minor grading impacts associated with, with that replacement of the roadway surface. So if you do have a driveway that extends out into Red Wing Avenue or Fourth Street or even the alley, there would also be some impacts to that driveway. So in that case, we'd pull out whatever portion of the driveway that we need out. And then once we're done with the project, once we're done with the new pavement, then we'll, we'll patch back in that driveway with a new concrete pavement. This was discussed in a little bit more detail at this, this public information meeting we held on the fifth, which was last Friday, but what's currently proposed for the roadway section south of Sixth Street is a seven ton section, which would be consistent with what you would find in a low volume road residential area. So between Sixth Street and Sixth Street, we're projecting that those traffic volumes via voids are going to be a little bit higher. So we'll be upgrading that area to a nine ton section. Roadway widths, just quickly kind of summarize this. So as we move from the south end of the project up to the north end, the street width starts out relatively narrow, kind of as it is right now between Ninth and Ninth and Tenth Street. That roadway is about twenty, twenty-four to twenty-six feet wide right now. A proposed street width in that area with these new improvements would be twenty-five feet. The table doesn't, doesn't say it right here. So in that first block between Ninth and Tenth Street, there will be curb and gutter added to one side of the road, which will eliminate the need for a ditch on one side of the road. And we'll get into a storm sewer, I think they threw, but there will be a storm sewer extended into that area. Between Ninth and Eighth Street, we're kind of in a transition zone. As we come out of that twenty-five foot street width, we move over to a, a fully, a fully urban section. So that means curb and gutter on both sides of the road. And the street width widens out to thirty and a half feet from curb base to curb base. So what does that mean? That basically means there's room for two travel lanes, two cars that are passing each other on the road and one lane for parking. If there is someone that happens to be parked on both sides of the road, what that would mean is it would allow the runway traffic to. As we move further north, basically north of Eighth Street, that, that street width will widen out to thirty-six feet. And basically that street width matches almost exactly what's, what's out. that, that street width will widen out to thirty-six feet, and basically that street width matches almost exactly what's, what's out, what's out there right now. So no changes to street width for the majority of the project area. We're preserving that thirty-six foot wide street. So in that case, that, that allows room for two eight-foot travel lanes, or two eight-foot parking lanes on both sides of the road, and two travel lanes that are ten feet wide in the center. As we move further north up to that intersection with Second Street, the roadway does widen out a little bit as we get into that downtown area. Discussion up to this point would be to rebuild that, that street to at or near the existing street width, just to allow a little bit more room in that, that commercial area. Within the alley, that existing pavement, depending on how you measure it, is sixteen to eighteen feet wide. What we're calling it is basically the amount of pavement that we can fit within the twenty-foot right-of-way. It's currently drawn in. It has an eighteen-foot wide pavement. The only other thing to point out is within Fourth Street, that existing pavement there is, it varies quite a bit. But we'll say, but we'll say twenty-seven to twenty-nine feet wide, so it's proposed, which is kind of mid, mid, middle there of the twenty-eight foot wide street. So we've kind of chatted a little bit about sidewalk improvements. So what's currently proposed with the project and what's included in the cost estimates for this project is anywhere where there's existing sidewalk, that sidewalk would be replaced. So one of the things that we're doing, a couple of, a couple of reasons for that. So there's a number of properties throughout the, throughout the project area. It's basically between Seventh Street and Second Street, where that existing sidewalk is in very poor condition. In those cases, it makes sense that we want to put new, new pavement, or new, new concrete walk in those areas. Another potential impact that will come about, once we get into this utility discussion, is along with replacing the actual sanitary mains and water mains, we'll be replacing the water and sanitary services within the public right-of-way. So as long as we have the street dug up, take this opportunity to also replace those service lines. So if there is any type of issue with those in the past, theoretically, it should happen without, it'll happen outside of the road and eliminate the need for a private property owner having to hire a contractor to come in and dig it up. So we want to get new infrastructure inside the public right-of-way. That's one of the things. So when we extend that sanitary or water service into the property, generally what that means is coming up to the backside of the walk where's, where is, and that's where generally most property lines will, will be located. One to three feet behind that sidewalk. So when we put in that new line, there'll be sidewalk impacts and we'll have to replace the sidewalk. So one other thing I kind of mentioned before, when we regrade the road in this area, sometimes it means that we also need to impact the grade of that, of that existing sidewalk. So in some cases, even if that sidewalk is in good condition, we still got to pull it out just so we can make our tie-ins. So we had looked at some of those intersections in the past that there's a number, most of those intersections where we didn't have ADA compliant ramps, any of the new ramps that we'd be putting in would have to meet those new ADA standards. So shallow slopes coming up into those ramps and certainly the curbs openings will allow wheelchair users to get up on the sidewalk. So storm sewer, what would be, I kind of mentioned earlier, some of the storm sewer issues associated with the project, some urban style system, just for a couple of blocks kind of on the north half. Basically, what we'll be doing as far as storm sewer goes is extending this urban style storm sewer system throughout the project area. Right now, I believe that storm sewer ends at, oh, Home Street? Home Street to Third Street, do you remember? We'll be extending that storm sewer on the north end all the way up to that alley intersection, so that alley that we're addressing in the south of Second Street. Extending the storm sewer up there can also help into the alley. On the south end of the project, that storm sewer system ends at Fifth Street, which is basically the bottom of the hill as you're driving south along Red Wing. We'll be extending that storm sewer up the hill to the south end of the project to capture basically any of the water that's falling within the road or flowing to the road within the project corridor will ultimately impact in the new storm sewer system.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Who's responsible for making sure there was grass or seed or something in all the areas that could get torn up?
Sure, yeah. So that's a good point. So along with all of this work, we're going to be impacting, if you live along Red Wing or, or Fourth Street, or even a back lot in, in the alley, all of our grading work is going to impact front yards or backyards, whatever, whatever side of your yard you're working on. So with the project, what we have included in the cost estimates is cost to restore your yard, once we're done with all of this excavation work. So there's a number of different ways. Normally, what I recommend for addressing that turf establishment is, once we're done with all of our, our major disruption, we'll pull out any of the existing topsoil, put in new amended topsoil, and then seed fertilize and mulch that's stabilized. Hopefully, with a little bit of good weather, that, that grass will come back sooner rather than later.
What about trees?
Yeah, so any of the boulevard trees that would be removed with the project, I should probably actually back up a little bit. So the primary goal with this project would be to avoid tree impacts. If there's a large tree that looks like it's not going to impact any of the infrastructure that we're putting in, I think it's in the best interest to try and leave that tree. Those trees are nice. Everyone likes them. If we do have to pull one down, the replacement of those trees is not included with the project. Up to this point, we haven't discussed replacement of those trees with the project. Generally speaking, just in my experience working with similar projects, or if you're working cities on similar projects, most of the time they're not. So if that is something that, you know, the council is about to open up for discussion at some point, we're certainly hoping that they do. Right now, right now, they're not included for, for replanting. Sanitary sewer. So like I said before, goal of the project would be to replace any of that old clay main. Generally speaking, that, those clay mains are also tied together with clay services that run up to each house. So what we would be doing was, would be replacing all of those mains with new eight-inch gasketed PVC pipe. So it's a kind of a lot of pipe material that's used in construction these days for replacement of sanitary sewer mains. Manholes will be replaced with new reinforced concrete manhole structures, and those service lines would be, will be replaced with new four-inch PVC lines that run up to the property line. So whole goal of this is to create all that infrastructure, that sanitary infrastructure inside the right-of-way. Should be a water-type system and avoid these opportunities for groundwater to get into the system. I will point out on the south end of the project, between the area, well, it's basically between Eighth and Seventh Street is where the existing sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer main ends. So with this project, what we would be doing is including, including in extension of that sanitary sewer all the way to the south end of the project, and they allow those properties on the very south end to connect up at some point or if they wanted to connect up at the time that, that we're out there to do that too. One other thing I'll point out, there's, there's a small handful of properties located around the Seventh Street intersection with Red Wing Avenue that have what we're calling is private sanitary sewer system. So traditionally, when an area is developed, what a city will require that developer to do is, where they put in their street, they put sanitary main line down the middle of the road, and service lines branch out from there to each individual house. Each house has its own individual service. For whatever reason, back in the day, there's a developer in town that wasn't doing that. So basically, we've got, I forget the exact number of homes around Seventh Street area. There's a number of homes that have snaked service lines. So we've got four, five, six houses that are all connected up to one four or six inch line. The issue with that is if there's ever an issue with that line, it plugs up or a pipe collapses or something like that, it's very difficult for public work staff to go in and try to access that point of failure without completely digging up the line. So we're looking to address those areas where we've got these snaked service lines by installing this traditional sanitary sewer system with the main line under the road. So I'm almost done with the utilities here, but this water main that we'll be replacing within Red Wing Avenue, between Water Tower, which is located between Seventh and Eighth Street, and Second Street, we'll be installing new ten-inch diameter ductile iron water mains, a little bit larger diameter main there just due to its proximity to the Water Tower and the fact that that line really, it serves more as a trump line for the entire community. So yeah, any of that existing cast iron pipe that's, that's out in the roadway right now, we'll be replacing with this ductile iron. On the south end of the project, we can downsize that, that main a little bit in this extension area. So just like the sanitary sewer, between Ninth Street and Tenth Street, there is no water main right now. With this project, we'd be extending that main line all the way to the south end. Just like the sanitary services, we'll be replacing any water services that are connected up to that main with new one-inch copper services and new water, a new curb stop, which is basically that main, that main valve located outside of your house. Along with the water main, there's also pipe replacements, valve replacements, pipe replacements, basically any of that hardware that goes into the pipe replacements as well. So getting into costs now, well, is, is there any questions with the proposed improvements? So I won't, I won't read through every single one of these numbers, but for, for all of these improvements that we just reviewed here, we've got our total project cost, which is over on the right-hand side, yeah, right-hand side of the screen here, which is about 3.7 million. That includes construction. That does include about 10% in contingencies that we don't have a home for quite yet, but realistically, once we get into design and construction, there's usually something that comes up that's the reason I'd be budgeted for. And that also includes design costs or putting together the plans and assisting with the construction administration during the actual construction. So project total, 3.7 million. So as far as funding this project, what the city will do, once these bits are received, the city will fund the project through the sale of a bond. So that bond is recreated through a number of different methods. So, you know, your utility and storm sewer revenues, there's portions of it that come out of the tax levy. And this last that we'll get in, we'll be getting into more detail here are special assessments. So I've got a couple of slides on how these special assessments are, are calculated. Just before I get into it, just do a little bit of background. So the city of Kenyon has a, a special assessment policy that was, that was put into effect years ago. That policy breaks down what portions of each part of the project is assessable and how much, how much of that would go back to a benefiting property owner. So I'll just kind of run through these one by one. The first one is a little bit, a little bit unique in that we deviated from that assessment policy a little bit. So if you're looking at that Kenyon assessment policy, it will say that 50% of the street costs associated with the project, so that's the base gravel, the excavation, and we have the new street, the new pavement, curb and gutter, those types of new areas of improvements, those are assessed at a rate of 50%. When we were putting these, this feasibility report together and discussing that with council, what we were finding was the total assessments for the average lot on this project were coming in too high in comparison to what other previous similar improvement projects have come in. So it's about a month ago, the city council provided direction to reduce that 50% down to 32. So 32% of the street costs is what's wrapped into the assessment, estimated cost right now, with the remaining 68 paid for by the city. Sidewalk, basically, the remainder of these are all calculated per the policy. So I'll just kind of run down these. Any of the sidewalk costs are assessed at a rate of 50%. Storm sewer is not an assessable item, so any of those storm sewer mains, catch basins out in the street, you're not seeing a special assessment directly for that. The water main replacement, for putting in that new eight or 10-inch cast iron or ductile iron main, is also not assessable. So one thing to point out is there's that, that small portion of water main on the south end of the project where we're extending that. So extension of new water main is assessed at a rate of 100%. It's basically those benefiting property owners bear the cost of that extension. One thing to note, this is a little bit unique scenario with this project. There's about, once we get into that Ninth and Tenth Street area, half of the road is already developed and connected up to the city water system. So properties in that, properties in this area between Ninth and Tenth Street are actually only getting an assessment rate of 50% of the water main because their, you know, one side of the street isn't being benefited, the other side is. So that's how that cost is broken down. Just like the water main reconstruction, the sanitary sewer main line reconstruction is not an assessable cost. So all of those costs for the manholes, for the pipe that's, that's running down the middle of the street is not assessed back, especially assessed back to adjacent homeowners. Areas where they have these, this private sanitary mains or where we've got these snaked service lines, follow the policy. Any of the main line that we have to put in to bring those areas basically up to traditional construction standards, that main line would be assessed at a rate of 33% to one-third, if the remaining two-thirds are poured by the city. Sanitary sewer and water services would be that connection to the main up to, up to your property line. So 100% of the sanitary service and the water service is assessed back to them. So for this next slide, I wanted to get this in front of everyone so they can see a breakdown of where your specific assessment is coming from, is coming from. I won't run through every single one of these numbers, but I will tell you how these, so street costs, what we do, add up all the costs that are going into the actual street improvements associated with the project, and we'll divide that by the total footage, or the total frontage of properties adjacent to that street. So that frontage would be that length of your property that a bus system. From there, we get the per foot cost for the improvements. So any of these street assessments are based on the frontage for your specific property. If you have a property that's 75 foot wide, you're assessed that. Like in this case, if it's Red Wing Avenue, and here in this area between Second and Eighth Street, your assessment will be calculated by multiplying that 57.39 price by the 75 foot width. So that's how our street costs are. So that's how, how street costs are assessed. Sidewalk is done the exact same way, you find that per foot cost, and then multiply it by whatever the width of your, of your ground is. Any of the assessments associated with the water main, like the water main extension or that, that private sanitary sewer main, those are also done on a frontage basis. When it comes to water services and sanitary services, those are just by, so if you get, if you get a water extent or a new water service up to your, up to your property line or a new sanitary service, it's just one fee, or one, one dollar, and I'll create two of those assessments. So what I've included in here is just a, one example calculation to show what the most typical assessment is, or what the assessment is for the most typical lot within this project corridor. So, by far, the, the most typical lot along Red Wing Avenue is five foot wide, it's in this area where we're putting in that, in thirty-six foot wide street. If that's, that house in this specific scenario will be getting new sidewalk along the entire frontage of the property, as well as a new sanitary and water service. So, with that, when we run through these, these calculations, what that typical lot is coming out to be, is we're estimating an assessment of about twelve thousand three dollars right now. What I've included on this slide is just a comparison to the most recent street project. Every, every street project that the city does is unique in its own way. They don't all have the exact same scope, so it's very difficult to directly compare what was assessed back in this most recent street project in twenty sixteen, which is this first street project, and what we're estimating for this one. But, I can go through that and make some adjustments for the scope, make some adjustments for inflation that's been realized since twenty sixteen. And basically, what it's coming out to be is, when I compared the assessments that we're currently projecting for Red Wing Avenue, Project Fourth Street, and Alley, these assessments are generally in the ballpark of what we would have seen if we were proceeding forward with the twenty sixteen project along First Street right now. Something to, to keep in mind with these assessments, right now, we're, we can only work off of estimated costs. We estimate these costs based on typical unit pricing that we see on these types of projects in this area. Our goal, when we're putting together these cost estimates, is to try to be conservative. The last thing that I wanted to do for all of you is tell you that the assessment's going to be twelve thousand dollars, and then come back to you in, in four months and tell you that it's actually going to be fourteen. I'm trying to stay conservative with this, but ultimately, this assessment at the end of the day, once you get to the actual assessment hearing when this is finalized, is based off of the actual bid prices that we get from the contractor, and the actual quantities of materials that we use that go into the entire project. So, basically, this is an estimate right now. It, it, it will change. Our hope is that this number will go down, but as with anything, there are, there's no guarantee.
Derek, if we get, if, say, when we put it out for bids and we get, say, three bids, and they're all over, way over what we were estimating, we could pull the plug on the project and say, this is too much, or just pull off.
Yep, we could do that. And generally, what happens on projects like that, take that plan back to the drawing board and see if there's something that we can do with it to try to reduce the cost, if there is some type of unexpected thing that the contractors were putting into their bid that we can say, okay, you don't have to do that, project cost goes down, or just put it on the shelf and move on. So I've stated before, those, that twelve thousand dollars for that example lot is just based on an estimated, or estimated project cost at this point. Once we, assuming that we, we go through this project step by step, and there's no, there's no stops along the way here, so we'll let bids, we'll award the contract to a contractor, they will start working on the project in spring of next year. Towards the end of construction, so in the fall of twenty twenty, once we better understand what those total quantities are that, that are going into the actual construction, we will come back to you, send you a notice that says, okay, here's what your final assessment is. So, at that point, that's when we have the actual assessment hearing. So during that hearing, you'll have an opportunity to, you know, provide any comments to the council that you have, if you want to appeal your assessment, that's the, that's the opportunity that you have from that. But, what I'm trying to get across to you is, that final assessment will not be one hundred percent known up until the fall of twenty twenty, when we actually receive that notice. As we learn more with this project, and as we go through design and have more public meetings, we'll take each of those, each of those opportunities where we have those updated numbers to give you the most updated estimate, but, yeah, that, that final number will be known until fall of twenty twenty. So options for payment, just going through these, so after that assessment hearing, you have up to thirty days. One option is, you have up to thirty days to pay the assessment in full, if you're not interested in paying any of the interest associated with it going on your property tax. So, it's a thirty-day period where no interest will be charged to your assessment. If you don't want to do that, this assessment that's associated with your, with your property would then go on your property taxes. When you get your, your tax statement each year, generally, what will show up as a special assessment a lot of times is kind of at the bottom of the sheet. And that assessment is spread out over generally a ten to twenty-year term. The actual term of the assessment is, is set by the council during the assessment hearing. So along with that, I had mentioned before, this project's going to be paid for by signing a bond, so there's interest associated with that bond. Generally speaking, what most cities do is, whatever the interest rate they're paying for that bond, the interest rate that they'll set for it, assessment will be in the neighborhood one percent higher than that. So, as an example, right now, I think interest rates are in the two and a half percent range. If that assessment hearing were being held right now, it would be maybe three years. There is options for deferring the assessment, or, or payment on that assessment at a later date. There's a number of criteria that you would have to meet, if that is something that you're interested in, if you're age sixty-five or older, permanent or, or have a permanent or total disability, if the property that you're being assessed for is ag land or it's, it's undeveloped, there's options for deferment of that assessment, or, or if you're on some type of leave for military service. If you're interested in that assessment, we can dive into the details after the meeting, but just to give you an idea of what that means, deferred assessment does not mean that the assessment goes away. What it means is, we'll set it off to the side, and you can pay it off at a later date. During that time that's set off to the side, interest is still accruing. Generally speaking, it's, it's pretty rare that people actually go through with the deferment, but it does come up from time to time. If you let that go too long, sometimes what can happen is that interest builds up to a pretty substantial volume, and it's quite a bit more than what the initial principle was. So, just a little typical deferments. So I'm just about done here, from doing this project schedule one more time. So, we're having the improvement hearing tonight, you'll have the opportunity to provide comments to the council. If the council decides to move forward over these next several months, we at Fulton Avenue will be putting together the final plans and specifications. Or at-